Okay, before we start our meeting, I'd like to ask Pastor Raul from the Church of Nazarene to come forward for invocation. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Oh, Lord, I give you praise for this amazing group of people. I thank you for their hearts, for their willingness to serve every one of them in their capacities, Father. I pray that you take every single gift that every person here has, that you would use it and just amplify it and just be glorified by it, so that they would take their voice, their experiences, the part of themselves that you put in there, and then use that, Lord, to create this beautiful thing, a beautiful plan, a beautiful direction for our community. Fill them with your encouraging heart, Father. Fill them with love for neighbor, with their minds and hearts to desire to see and to understand, to empathize, to listen, to learn, and to grow, and to always be a part of this community. And may each one of us, every single person in Los Baños, Father, support them knowing that they are also a part of this community. So may we pour into each other, may we do so to your glory, Father. Bless all that we do today. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call this meeting to order for June 18th, 2025, and Chief, God bless.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Okay, if we could have a roll call, please.
Sanders?
Here.
Chavez?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Amabile?
I am here. So the next item, item four, is consideration approval of the agenda as submitted, but staff has requested that item six D, the City Council Resolution Number 6944 authorizing entering into a lease agreement between the City of Los Banas and Fernando Escobar, Escobido, I know I get it right, BBA and son, for the purpose of leasing pastored land located at the City of Los Banas wastewater treatment facility for a period of five years in the amount of $145,192.72 to be removed from the consent agenda. So if the council approves of that, if we could have a motion removing that one item.
Still move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted, removing item six D. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it. Now we turn to our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of our city. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action can be taken on on non-agenda items, and you are limited to five minutes to speak to the city council. Please come forward, state your name, and we would love to hear from you. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and fellow residents. My name is Zadai Pukil-Yamas, and we're here tonight to talk about a little project that we're working on. It's about the commemorating 250th birthday of the founding of the United States Marine Corps. And with me to talk a little bit about a partnership that I have with the American Hero Initiative is Mrs...
Maria Phillips. It's okay. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I'm proud to share the American Hero Initiative with you guys again. I was here a little bit over a year ago to talk to you guys about this, but there was a large distraction of what's going on in the city at that point, so I think it went unheard. So starting a nonprofit isn't easy, but we've stayed committed to our mission and have started to receive some funding. At American Hero Initiative, we provide grants for disabled veterans to help with critical home and auto repairs. Depending on the situation, we may cover part or even all of the cost. This is also including assisting with insurance deductibles. Our goal is very simple, to support those who sacrificed so much for us. We're here in the valley, and with your help, we hope to expand and reach even further. Thank you for supporting our heroes, and I'm gonna let him talk a little bit, and then I'm gonna talk about the dinner that we've got planning.
Fantastic. As you can see, it's a very worthwhile event, and I'm very proud to partner with them. Again, as you know, the Marine Corps is the world's finest fighting force, established in November 10th, 1775 by the act of the content of Congress. The Marine Corps, most folks, donors, probably don't know, is that they, their actions, their decisive actions were pivotal in us, or the continent, the colonists establishing their independence from the Crown. They fought with General George Washington after the crossing of Delaware at the Battle of Trenton, where decisively defeated the Haitians, which caused increase in morale, stopped the desertions, and swung the tide of sentiment towards independence. Throughout 250 years Marine Corps history, they have been decisive in small numbers, such as at the Battle of Bella Woods in World War I against the Germans. They fought with such ferocity and tenacity that the Germans nicknamed "Tufu Hundin," devil dogs, because of the way they fought with such determination and excellence. After World War II, we know about their exploits in the Pacific, but what most folks don't understand or know is that they also participated in the development and assistance with the landings at Normandy, since that is their specialty, is amphibious operations. They also took part in small skirmishes on land in the European theater. On to the Korean War or conflict, where they fought off in a decisive battle in the withdrawal from Incheon Reservoir, where they decisively held off hundreds and hundreds of thousands of Chinese communists who crossed into North Korea. We know about their exploits in Vietnam, notably Battle for Huay City, where they fought off regiment after regiment of communists from the north. We know about their exploits in Iraq, in Afghanistan, Panama. Wherever the president sends them, they are ready at a moment's notice. So again, this is to commemorate that, those exploits, and also for camaraderie and all the welcome. Again, now I'll turn it back over to a little bit about what we're gonna have that night.
So our plan is November 8th, from 6:00 to 9:00, we're gonna have a dinner and dance at M&amp;M's Restaurant, and we're going to be doing all the traditional things, the colors. We're going to be reading the birthday message from the commander, and also, we're gonna have a marine cake that we'll have. We're gonna have a silent auction as well. We're going to have proceeds that are gonna go to the American Hero Initiative, which again, will go right back into the community for those disabled veterans. We are in the beginning stages of all of these things, so the specific timeline will map its way out. We will be having an event online where people can purchase tickets, and we will have a menu to choose from as well. So be looking forward to those, and we'll also, we'll have a lot of fun that night. We're gonna have a lot of fun. That's, I like to have fun, so trust me, we're gonna have some fun. My husband's a disabled veteran, my father is also a veteran, so these, these kinds of events really take to my heart, so I'm hoping to see you guys there, and we just look forward to having such a great event right here in Los Baños.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else who would like to speak to the city council, please come forward. Welcome, please state your name.
My name's Alani Moore, and I just wanted to, thank you guys for your time, sorry. I just wanted to use my social activism and bring awareness to situations happening all over the United States, as well as the whole world. Unfortunately, this current administration is causing chaos and harm to people all across the nation. With that being said, California has been trying to implement a law that will shape us, oh wait, sorry, that will strip us from our freedom of speech, for standing up for Palestinian rights, and showing solidarity, and showing solidarity by wearing a kaffiyah and deeming it as antisemitic. However, however, the Zionists of Israel are the real antisemitic. They commit war crimes and atrocities with the full support of the United States. I am beyond disappointed at the lack of humanity, empathy, and kindness from Americans. The amount of racist, hateful, and bigoted people that exist is why so many individuals, not only in the United States, but all around the world, are suffering from systemic oppression. Every life matters. After World War II, we said never again to genocide or a Holocaust, but here we are, almost 80 years later, committing a genocide on Palestinians, Congolese, Sudanese, and many others. For what? Resources? Land? Money? Innocent people, mainly women and children, should not be martyred at the sake of US greed. I would also like to point out that the state of California is one of the largest states whose taxes are used to commit genocide. The City of Los Baños sends $2 million of our taxes to fund Israeli, Israel's military. We should all be pushing for world peace and a full arms embargo on Israel. We must stand on the right side of history and not be controlled by biased media and propaganda. I urge the people of Los Baños to boycott and divest from institutions that are complicit with the genocide. As of today, it is day 620 of the genocide, as well as 108 days since Israel imposed a total humanitarian aid cutoff. It is urgent for the Palestinians to receive this aid because their hospitals, schools, homes, and even desalination tanks have been bombed and destroyed. With that being said, at least 1,580 medical staffers have been killed by Israeli fire. At least three doctors who were detained were killed in custody, as well as 227 journalists who were covering the ongoing genocide have been killed. These martyrs are war crimes. According to the Palestine Chronicle, 55,493 innocent lives have been killed, 14,000 people are missing, and 129,320 people are wounded. An ally of the United States with the continuous support for military aid committing a genocide is not a true ally. The US, as well as a majority of our legislators who receive money from Israeli lobbyists, are bipartisan to continue funding a genocide. This is not a left or right, a Democrat versus Republican problem, but a nation who has blood on their hands. I encourage everyone to fact-check me and do some research yourself. If it were you, or a loved one, or a neighbor, you would want someone to speak up for you, and we need to do everything we can to end this. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Please come forward. We welcome you.
Hello.
I take this off to switch roles, but, okay, thank you for listening to me about this next issue that we are having right here in Los Baños, Amherst County. I want to bring to your attention Assembly Bill 84. This is affecting the homeschoolers in this community. Backing up us for a second, I've been running the Los Baños Homeschool Co-op for eight years, going on nine years. We oversee over 150 families and help them with homeschooling and offer a variety of things. Why I want to talk to you about AB 84 is it's going to affect small businesses. If this bill passes, vendors that our children use will not be able to be used. Not this, it might be happening as soon as this one, depends on how fast this rolls. So to explain that, when you are homeschooling through a charter school, you get funding to be able to use for the arts, sports, and the like. By doing this, our children will not have access to those things. I am also going to explain to you about my husband. My husband is a tutor for these children, and 80% of his business is through these charter schools. If the bill goes through, his business will close, which will also take a huge financial hit on our family. Not only myself, you can talk to a variety of dance studios, music teachers, that offer our children these services. They will have the same potential of closing and having to fire off their employees. This is a huge thing, especially with a small town. All these small businesses will be affected by this. I will take youth movement out of Tracy as an example. They employ dozens of employees, they help all over the valley with offering physical education to homeschool children and the like. They will no longer be able to do that. I will add, he just had a baby, so if he has to close down, that's his whole income. Not only that, but our children in Los Baños cannot take school sports or be part of the arts in the public schools. In the state of California, it is up to each district to be able to allow homeschool children to have those electives. Los Baños Unified has decided not to allow homeschoolers in our community to be a part of their sports teams and their arts programs. That is all over. If you look up the Tim Tebow Law, I don't know, I'm not a football person. States all over the United States are adopting this law where states' public schools must be, must allow homeschoolers to be able to partake in these things. He himself was a homeschooler. He would not have won all of those championships if he was never given the chance to play football for a public school. So not only are we currently limited, but if this passes, that takes away all the arts and sports that our children could ever do. The state is forcing us to make other choices. My daughter has an autoimmune disease. We homeschool her because if she goes to school and picks up the flu, she will be sick for up to three weeks and not just five days. When she's sick, she's sick. When she had COVID, she spiked all the way up to 108 and was having seizures. So we homeschool her, because that is the best for her safety. So I will be at the Merced office of Senator Cabrero on the 23rd at 4:00 PM to try to help them understand the effects that it's going to have on these communities, these small businesses, and our children. I just wanted to bring this bill to your attention, so you guys can further explore it, but small businesses in this community will be extremely affected if this bill goes through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Please come forward. Yeah, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward, so I'll go ahead and close the public forum. Thank you all for speaking, and all written comments received will be read by the city clerk during the public forum, if they are received by email to the, to the city council, and they'll be added as a supplement to the agenda packet on the city's website. And Lucy, is there any correspondence today?
I've received nothing.
We did not receive anything for the public forum, so we will move on. And again, thank you. So item six, consideration approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda can be voted by one motion unless removed by a city council member for discussion. And Lucy, if you'd like to read those items.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 252010 through 252183 in the amount of $2,673,771.22. City Council Resolution Number 6938, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement between the City of Los Banas and Clifton Larson Allen LLP to perform professional auditing services for a term of three years with the right to extend for two additional years in the amounts not to exceed year one, $73,555, year two, $79,950, year three, $76,350, year four, $77,750, year five, $79,250. City Council Resolution Number 6943, authorizing amendments to the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget associated with the Pioneer Road widening project in the amount of $202,602 for police department vehicle purchases in the amount of $184,366. Landscape and Lighting District 11 in the amount of $225,000, and general update grant reconciliation in the amount of $12,000. Item six D was removed with the approval of the agenda. City Council Resolution Number 6945, accepting grant deed for a variable with water line easement dedication of approximately 9,064 square feet on the site at the Los Banas Unified School District Early Education Center, and authorizing the interim city manager to execute all required documents for this dedication. City Council Resolution Number 6946, accepting public improvements for Center Avenue Pioneer Development Company, Inc., and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, on item six, A, B, C, E, and F, is there any items the council would like to discuss?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to pull items six C and six F for discussion.
C and F. Okay, so let's go ahead, and before we just approve the rest of them, let's go ahead and talk about, does any, any other council members like to discuss anything? Okay, item C is the Council Resolution 6943, and Finance Director Moreno, that's your, maybe there's some questions on that for you.
Okay, I'll, I'll go forward, Mayor, with my question first. What I'm questioning is in Landscape Lighting District 11, and we're backfilling this lighting district to bring it in sync so that it's not out of, that it's not running in the, in the, in the red all of the time. But one of the things that I noticed is, where is it, in fiscal year 2122, let's see if I'm looking right on here. There was a request, I believe, in 2223, I'm sorry, there was a request for reconciliation in our budget to resolve this issue, but the full amount didn't go forward. It was, I think, only 12,000 was transferred out of the general fund. So I'm real curious to find out why, three years ago, this wasn't resolved, and it's now costing the city more to try to resolve this. So that's my question on this particular item. I'm not sure if Mrs. Moreno will be able to answer this, since she's not here, so I'm gonna refer this. So could you come to the mic, please?
So in the year, this year 2223, there was a mid-year request of $525,000. We were looking at this from the beginning in terms of whether or not the assessment district would be able to make up the original capital outlay because of the restrictions to the assessments that, that, that particular assessment district has, Assessment District 11. So what we did is, is, is we started seeing the assessment districts starting to improve in terms of revenue versus expenditures, and so we, we paused on the transfers. There was no transfer from the general fund to that for that purpose, but we then did budget the next year for 150 to see if that would bring us a little bit closer to bringing that to, to normal. And then now we're, we're, we're seeing that there's about another $200,000 that's going to be needed to, to bring that assessment district back to zero. So in essence, it's actually saving the general fund about 150,000, because we didn't, we didn't transfer over the whole 525. We're transferring about 370.
And that's on top of the 150?
No.
We never transferred any money at all?
We did, we did transfer the 150 last year.
Okay, so 150? Okay, so 150 on top of what we're asking for today is?
Right, but we, but the mid-year, we asked for 525, and we didn't make that.
So it was 150 for last year and then 225 for this year, so 375.
Versus the 525.
Versus the 500 that was anticipated then.
And so that is because of tax revenue from the residents?
Yes, the assessments are starting, and there's more infill starting to come in there, and so it's starting. So we didn't want to transfer that amount, and then we really couldn't then transfer that back to the general fund, so we wanted to make sure that the general fund wasn't jeopardized in terms of having to pay for it. Moving forward, I think, as we look at the assessment districts, it's more of a level of service. So it's more of a determination of this council saying, okay, is the general fund going to subsidize assessment districts, or are we going to reduce the level of service within those assessment districts commensurate with what the assessments are? So that's kind of the history behind not doing it in that year, and then we budgeted it again. And we were looking to see whether or not in this current year, at the beginning of the budget where we requested nothing, which at the beginning of last, of this year, we probably should have requested a little amount to make up the difference, but we were seeing this moving in a positive direction, so we were just trying to ensure that we weren't going to pull too much money out of the general fund to subsidize this. And by doing this, I think we got the subsidy correct with the general fund.
And I think it'll also be a process that we're going to be going through all of our assessment districts to make sure that the revenue and the level of service are pretty close together.
That we're not overspending.
And that we're not overspending, and that we're also putting aside a reserves for all that infrastructure that's going to need to be, you know, maintained and fixed in the future years. So we're going to do a full analysis of all of the districts, and this is the beginning to be making it positive and making sure that it's sustainable.
Yeah, and so, and that answers the question I was going to ask next, is if this is going to be sustainable so that we're not coming back to the general fund again to backfill this district that the assessment charges to the residents on their taxes are going to be enough to sustain.
And we are going to be working with Joe and the team to make sure that those levels of services are appropriate to the resources that are coming in, and that we're also putting those things, reserves aside to be able to do those improvements. So that's our plan, to make sure that we don't affect the general fund.
Thank you.
I could jump in as well and just say, we read the presentation last month, or last two weeks ago, and yeah, the districts are healthy. 11 is the, has been the problem for years, of course, the deficit that required the transfer, that's been ongoing for quite some time. The revenues and expenditures of that district are trending in the right direction. However, they're not going to overcome, the revenues are not going to be able to overcome the expenditures enough to repair the deficit that had occurred, and that's what this transfer was in place for a couple of years ago and is now getting fulfilled. The other districts are in pretty healthy condition, but I do, we've emphasized, it's a delicate balance that you have to have in order to keep those in good health. There are limitations to what you can have in the reserve at any given time, and so it's not just, you can't just build it up until the end of time either. You have to really balance what your revenues and expenditures are and then have your capital plan. And like I said, 11 really has a handicap because, one, it's capped out at 5% increases as opposed to all the other districts except one are able to go up to 10%. That 5% really gets eaten up by just utility bills alone. And then additionally, when District 11 came on, those, you know, 20, 25 years ago, those rates were set too low for the level of service that our city is providing overall. Again, this is a district with high level of acreage, high level of decorative lighting, parks, et cetera. As developments have come in, South Point being the most recent one, those have been set at a proper current rate. However, again, they are maxed out at 5% increases, and so it's something to really try to monitor, but the base of that district, it still needs to be, you know, you need to be very delicate with your expenditures in that district because of the way that it's been set up as far as the low cost.
So since the district, I assume, has a lot of parks, a lot of decorative lighting, so forth, depending on the cost of products, materials, things for replacement, it could get maybe a little out of whack again. Is there any way that, I know the city can't just arbitrarily raise that percentage price, but is there a way maybe that the voters in that district could?
It would require, I think, a Prop 218 process, which would be pretty risky to all districts and probably would, I would suggest that the, it may not have the support that they would need, something to analyze for sure. You know, I think my biggest concern in District 11 really goes back to those capital items in terms of going backwards, as you say, like going back into deficit. Those cap, the capital items are what really concern me, sidewalks, streetlights, playgrounds, restrooms, those are your major capital items. There's a storm station there as well, but they have been doing work to the, those facilities are in progress. But that being said, that's where your big expenses really come, and they come unexpected. But again, we have things like our charge ins for our staff, and that's an increasing cost. Those things, as well as PG&E, as well as water, those are going to continue to go up. It is something to look at in terms of trying to figure out how we can get the level of service as manageable as possible. There's, it's not so simple. You can't just turn off the water and let the grass grow, right? But it's something that, you know, I think it's important for us to look at. But overall, I think the revenue and expenditures are trending in the right direction for that district, but the leftover deficit from really decades of it building up, it needed something like this in order to have that transfer to get it to a clean state. And I think this is a plan that, having discussed a couple of years ago, and is kind of getting processed now with the transfer this year as well as, I think, what was it, last year?
So, and this is my last statement. I know that I tried to work with a previous public works director about amenities to put in the ground through aeration to reduce watering and keep the water in our parks, and the company was willing to help us with aeration equipment and, you know, just about everything we needed to get this done. But that failed. And so I'm sure you guys are working on whatever you can to reduce the costs in these high-cost districts. I don't know if down the line it would be worth, you know, taking out those electric lightings and putting in solar lights so that it could reduce the cost to the city. It might be a big expense upfront, but over time it could save on electricity. So we have to think of some new ways to deal with the issues that we have coming forward because naturally, the cost of doing business with these companies is not going to go away.
And I think that's one of the things that we're going to be looking forward to in making sure that we have those upgrades that we maybe are able to do and reduce those costs of electricity and costs of providing the staffing and those services. So it's looking and having an open mind to be able to implement technology to help us reduce the costs.
All right, thank you both.
Okay, any questions on for item F? Want to go ahead and just ask that?
Sure, sure. It's, there's no, there are no questions. I was just reviewing this particular item, and I had spoken with our city manager on it, and the map that's on page 152 indicates that from Cardoza to the north and Pioneer to the south on Center Avenue, that the entire road has been repaved, but there is a section that has not been redone that abuts some farming area to the southeast of the property, and I just want for the record to say that this map is incorrect so that, you know, we don't have any issues following later on. So that's the only thing I want to bring up, is that the map that's been provided shows that the whole road's been paved, but there are, there is a section that has not been paved under this project. So that's merely for the record.
So to be clear, this is not regarding the pavement of the road. This is the track map for the public improvements along Center Ave. It does extend beyond the development of, this is regarding that Center Ave development. Amabile Court is one of the streets that comes off of it. And what this is referencing is those public improvements. Along the development itself, you have the wall planner, the landscape itself, some trees and some plants, extending north and south, south being Pioneer and north being all the way up to Cardoza. That references the PG&E poles that had to be moved. I don't know if you recall, but maybe a year or two ago, there was still those poles in the road, a big mess, but they were able to get them moved. And so that's what this is referencing, and that's why the map extends.
So the red, the red outline on the map is referencing the PG&E?
All the public improvements, which the PG&E falls under that. Really, the public, public improvements, like what you would think of for the city is going to be the section along where the actual development is. That's that wall planner and right-of-way space.
Yeah, and that's what I thought. So I just, I just wanted to state for the record that the map is not correct, so that we don't have any issues going forward. Okay, that's it.
Okay, so since we pull items C and F, we need a motion for A, B, and E approved. Need a motion for items A, B, and E on a consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
A, B, and E.
A, B, and E.
Second. We got a motion and second for items A, B, and E on the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Item C is Resolution Number 6943, which was discussed. We have a motion to approve that.
So move, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move to approve item, Resolution Item 6943. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. The last item is item F, City Council Resolution 6946.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Anyway, motion and second, approve Resolution 6946. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at a public hearing and described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Our public hearing is to receive public comment and consideration of extending the developer agreement for villages at Stone Creek Four subdivision Arthur W. and N. L. Dunkley Meritor Property Trust, UTD, and Rosalynn M. Simon Revocable Trust, UTD. This is a second reading and for adoption, so I'm opening up, we had this public hearing also last meeting. So anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name at this time. Okay, I do not see anyone coming forward. Like I said, we did discuss this last meeting. So with that, we need to have a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1208.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of 1208. As read by title.
Second. Anyway, a motion and second, as stated, to waive the second reading, Resolution 1208. Any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. And now we need the adoption of Resolution 1208, a motion to adopt.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 1208, as read by title.
Okay, a motion and a second for Resolution 12, ordinance, excuse me, ordinance, number 1208. Any further questions or comments? And it's an ordinance, so we need a roll call vote, please.
Sanders?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Amabile?
Yes. Okay, next item is also a public hearing for consideration of the 2025-26 appropriation limit, and this would be a City Council Resolution Number 6947, setting the tax-related appropriation limit in compliance with Proposition 4 and Proposition 111 for the fiscal year 2526. Before we open the public hearing, I'm going to go to Finance Director Moreno. If you would like to introduce this item, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Today we'll present the city's annual appropriation limit, also referred to as a GAN limit, for the upcoming fiscal year. This is a compliance item required under state law and reflects our continued commitment to transparency and fiscal accountability. The appropriation limit was established by Proposition 4 passed in 1979 and codified in Article 13B of the California Constitution. It places limits on the amount of tax revenues that may be spent each year by the state and local governments. Each jurisdiction must adopt its limit annually using the state's prescribed calculation. The California Department of Finance provides two factors for the calculation, the change in per capita personal income and the change in population. For fiscal year 2526, the cost of living change is 6.44%, and the population change is 0.43%. These are converted to ratios to compute the adjusted factor. Using the Department of Finance methodology, the fiscal year 2024-25 appropriation was 127 million. Applying the adjustments of 1.0644 and the 1.0142, adding a compound adjustment of 1.0795, the results appropriation for fiscal year 2526 is 137 million. We are requesting council to open the public hearing, receive comments and questions, and close the public hearing and adopt the resolution as presented.
Great, thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing before we hear from the city council to receive public comment, consideration of our appropriation limit for '25 and '26, our next fiscal year that we're entering. Anyone like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Okay, do not see or hear anyone coming forward. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the city council. Questions or comments about our appropriation limit? Of course, we don't tax even close to that. And I guess, are there actually some cities that do tax that much, I guess?
There are some cities that do come close to their appropriations. We are at 30 million about, so our appropriation limit's 137 million, so yes, we don't tax that much.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Any questions from the city council? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 6947.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6947 as read by title.
Okay, motion and second, Resolution 6947, as stated, questions or comments from the city council. Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Okay, our next item is also another public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of our fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. This would be City Council Resolution Number 6948, approving our '25-26 fiscal year budget including updates to Division 4 salary schedule, Division 13 business and travel expenses for the Los Banas Policy and Procedure Manual. And at this time, we'll ask our finance director to go ahead and introduce this item before I open the public hearing.
Well, good evening, Mayor again and council. This evening, I'm pleased to present the recommended budget for fiscal year 2526. Tonight's presentation will include a summary of major funds, context for key changes, the required public hearing, and a recommendation to adopt the budget resolution. The municipal budget serves both a financial blueprint and a policy document. It defines how the city funds public services, aligns with community goals, and upholds transparency and accountability. This budget reflects legal requirements and council direction. Since June 4th, general fund revenue projections have increased by 252,001 due to an updated property tax estimate. And we actually got better news today. Our base estimate for our property taxes went up 6.07%. And the only other city in the county that went up higher was the city of Merced, 6.52. that went up higher was the city of Merced, 6.52. So we're not that far behind. Total projection revenues now stand at approximately 27.54 million. On the expenditure side, the general fund total has been revised upward by 264,478, bringing estimated expenditures to approximately 27.52 million. This slide compares fiscal year 2024-25 estimated expenditures with the proposed fiscal year 2526 budget, detailing changes in personnel, supply and services contingency, and overall operating costs. There has been no change to our original one-time general fund expenditure since the July 4th presentation. The summary of our general fund changes since June 4th, again, have been the 252,000 increase in general fund revenues, expenditures of 44,368 for unrepresented personnel adjustments, 20,000 for expanded spay and neuter efforts and code enforcement, bringing their total to 50,000, 50,000 to enhance homeless outreach through C E D D, 150,000 increase to the general funds contingency, a revised total of 250,000, for a total of 27.52 million. This slide is here now. It was not here last time I presented. It somehow had vanished, but it's here now. The operating budget maintains a surplus of approximately 15,143 and includes the one-time expenditures of 822,000. We still project an unallocated general fund balance of 10.95 million by the end of June 30th, 2026. We have in the assigned funds a 30% reserve equating to 8.17 million. Assigned and committed funds have not changed since our June 4th meeting. This budget supports 18 of the 19 authorized new positions, reinforcing staff across police, community development, public works, and facilities. These positions support council priorities around safety, development, and operational effectiveness. One position is being reclassified in the public works from Inspector One to Operations Manager. Minor adjustments to Measure H, Measure P, Enterprise Internal Service and Capital stems from the unrepresented personnel cost and a P C E grant affecting facilities. Impact areas include code enforcement, fire, police, water, wastewater, solid waste, fleet, and facilities. No changes have been made to the capital projects other than funding sources of the projects. This budget reflects alignment with the council's priorities, allocating nearly 2 million for public safety and homeless initiatives, 1.09 million for parks, and over 14 million for infrastructure improvements. In summary, these adjustments strengthen service delivery, support key priorities like public safety and homelessness, and maintains healthy reserves. With that, we'd like to open the public, we'd like you to open the public hearing, welcome comments, and respectfully recommend adoption of the fiscal year 2025-26 budget resolution.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for comments and consideration of our fiscal year budget for '25-26 for this city. Anyone that would like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. This is our third review of our budget. We had one in May that was around seven hours, I think, at the PD station. And all the department heads talked to the city council about priorities. And then we had the June 4th. And now we're having this one. So anyone who would like to speak on this budget, we'd love to hear from you. Okay, I do not see or hear anyone coming forward. So I'll turn it back over to the city council. And what would the city council like to discuss?
Thank you.
Yep. You're the money gal.
So I looked at item 7C that was in our agenda packet. And under the Public Works Department, we have four options for Public Works Director slash Engineer. We have an option for Public Works Director. And then under Engineer, we have a category for Engineer. And then another category for Assistant Engineer. Now, I know out of all four of these, there will only be one option chosen. But I thought we were trying to move back to just having an engineer rather than a combination Public Works Engineer to free up the city from, at least from my perspective, of having that person feel that their engineering license was obligated in some way based on decisions that they were making. And I may be off-base with that. I know I had one experience with that. So I'm just kind of concerned as to whether or not we're going to make a choice on what direction we're going to go.
Let's hear her answer that.
Thank you for the question, council member. So as staff was reviewing the goal of splitting the department head from the engineering side of the House, we started to develop different scenarios under which we wanted to operate. And so one of those scenarios was, well, first of all, we will succeed in separating an engineer out from the Public Works Director. That is happening. There is one position for a Public Works Director slash Engineer or just a Public Works Director. That's one of the two positions. The other position that we are creating this year with the budget, thank you very much, by the way, for that, it's much needed, is the city engineer position or a engineer position, who will focus only on the engineering portion of the House. As we went through scenarios, there are scenarios under which or whereby we might pick up a good quality candidate who might have their engineering certificate, who wants to also be the Public Works Director. And so we didn't want to not avail ourselves of that opportunity to hire someone of that nature because if we can get both an engineer in this hand and a Public Works Director and an engineer in this hand, we've just increased our staffing by, I think it's 200% in the engineering side of the House. And we have a very large need for both of those individuals in the family. So this representation in the salary schedule was just an attempt to provide us with the options of, okay, if we wanted just a Public Works Director, slightly less pay salary range, but we were also going to get a city engineer. Those two things will happen independent of one another. It just so happens that perhaps it might both be engineers. And so we just wanted to try and account for all the different scenarios that might come up that we might encounter. And we wanted to be able to adapt to them successfully to make the Public Works Department even more efficient and effective than it is now. It might not happen where a Public Works Director comes in with an engineering certificate. And so they would step down to the slightly less salary range because they don't have the certificate. But we're still going to go out and search out a city engineer. If they do have the certificate, we're still going to search out the city engineer. We just might have the option of two. And we can attract both because both are needed. So I hope that explains things. I totally understand the question, and I get it. When we first thought of the idea, we limited ourselves to Public Works Director and then city engineer. But as we started to play with scenarios amongst ourselves, we were like, oh, well, what if this happens? We might not attract a good person who has an engineering license, who wants to be also the Public Works Director. And then we would miss that opportunity. So we wanted to capture that ability to have that opportunity to potentially hire someone like that. So that was really the design behind the idea of what you see in front of you. Staff is more than happy to have further discussions on that item. But that's the main gist of what we were trying to accomplish is just cast out the widest net and capture the best people for both.
And with that said, when it comes to engineering license or certificate, there are various types of engineering license, I would assume.
Yeah.
So if you hire one with a, one particular license, and say it's the Public Works Director and has a license for a particular area of engineering, would that, hiring the city engineer, would that take you in a different direction to look for a different type of certificate? Because I wouldn't think you'd want two people with the same certificate. And maybe you would, I don't know.
Yeah, I, go ahead.
The city engineer degree is a professional engineer, a P E. It's only one certificate. I don't think it's broken down into divisions of certificates.
Try to help as well. So I think for the city engineer position, whether that's the city engineer or the Public Works Director slash city engineer, I think we would be definitely looking for a P E, a professional engineer. They all, some engineers may just have a bachelor's in engineering, right? They haven't pursued their P E or maybe they're from a different state, different situations like that. But I think for the city engineer role, we would definitely want to have a P E in that position. Certainly, the director would, either way, need to have some sort of functional knowledge of engineering. In terms of, say, both the city engineer and the Public Works Director both having a background in civil engineering, I think that would absolutely benefit the city. We have endless amounts of projects, transportation projects, streets projects, all that sort of stuff that would benefit from. Certainly also diversifying that would be beneficial. But I think you're most commonly going to find civil engineering for municipal positions. I think we've had in the past mechanical and other engineers through it. But most of our projects are based in civil. So I don't think there's the concern of overlap. And I think most cities would consider it a great problem to have, having multiple engineers.
And so P E means civil or public?
Just professional.
Just general professional?
And what comes with the P E is they can stamp plans. So if you're not a P E, you can't stamp a plan.
So if there's something specific, we still may have to go out
Yes.
and hire an engineer that is specific to.
Things like traffic studies, where you can get a traffic engineer to assist with programs of that nature.
But I think if they're a P E, they have all types of experience, if not specific.
Yeah, they're able to pass the test.
So, and I'm just digging a little bit deeper here.
That's right.
Why would we need two P E engineers if their job is to put a stamp on something?
Well, it's not so much about the need for more than one stamped person. It's just there is a lot of activity in public works and the engineering side of the House that gets farmed out to various consultants. And a lot of that cost is pass-through cost on the development projects. And so a lot of this might not even be encumbered by the general fund because of that pass-through through the development of projects and subdivisions. But it's just about the workflow and the number of projects. So for example, you might have a sewer lift station or you might have a paving project or you might have a subdivision that needs to go through a development process. All of those things have engineering needs. And we know that we are sending out so much engineering work to the various consultants that we work with that we would be able to capture a majority of it back, not all of it, because of, it's just the demand. And I agree with what Joe said. If we have a problem where we've got two engineers, oh, my gosh, we're doing really good because they're really hard to come by these days. So.
So basically, I think maybe what you're telling me and the Financial Department is saying that if we have these two positions and they both have, you know, P Es, that this is going to be a cost savings to the city in regards to sending out requests for engineers with private contracts?
Yes, yes. And in many cases, there will be an offset because it's a program or a review that was brought on by some type of development project that will be charged back to the development. And therefore, that work will be charged up.
I would just add that I think also having these two positions will help our stability as a department. So, I mean, a number of these projects that I've kind of inherited in this acting role, I mean, they've had three, four, or five directors in that time, different engineers looking over these projects, different phases of that project. And so I think that helps to maintain our stability, our institutional knowledge as these projects progress. You know, something like Deansa comes to mind where it's been the hands of multiple people. And I would also just add that the director, you know, they're pulled in a million different directions to have somebody that really is separate, that can really focus on, again, there's projects, but there's also the development side of it. And there's a lot of high-level documents that come through Public Works.
And then I have just a couple of other questions. When I went back to District of Columbia for One Voice, there were, there was two categories that were assigned to me, and they were both public safety, one for our police department and one for our fire department. And there were quite a few statistics given to me to present to the electeds back there for our community and trying to get grants, which is difficult in this day and time because of how they look at California's small communities versus East Coast, Midwest, small communities. I mean, they're actually really small compared to us. A small community that might get a grant that's a city may have 5,000 or 6,000 people, whereas, you know, we have 48,000, I think I saw in the budget information, which is still small by standards of California. So it really puts us in a tough position to get these grants. And that's something I hope that, you know, the federal government will evaluate at some point that what's out here on the West Coast is not the same as the Mideast and the East Coast. But with that being said, both the fire chief and the police chief, as I said, gave me quite a bit of information. And one of the things that I was kind of impressed about is, well, I won't say impressed, but I guess there's a standard, NFPA standard 1710 that our fire department is required to live up to. And it restricts them in certain ways of dealing with situations that may come up in regards to fight, well, according to the information given to me then was in regards to fighting residential structures. So I know that in the budget, there are three battalion chiefs that are allocated, but only two at this time, that are going to be funded. So I'm making a plea right now that if not now, maybe at mid-year, we need to relook at this to see how this is going to affect our fire department. Because I often see, you know, our fire chief out when I'm, you know, going out maybe weekdays or on weekends, and he's out there fighting fires with the firefighters. I don't know how that relates to the battalion chief. But for me, I think our fire chief needs to be here for administrative purposes to keep the fire department going and not to have his feet on the ground fighting fires with his firefighters. So I'm just asking the council to, you know, perhaps look at that, maybe have us with the city manager reconsider. If not now, maybe in a couple of months or three, six months as to whether or not we need to fill that position. Because we are going to be getting a new fire station here in District Four soon. And from what I understand with the information given to me, these battalion chiefs are designated to kind of run the three shifts. And if our fire chief has to substitute in that position to run a shift and to designate what's going to happen during the shift time, then that gives him no opportunity for life, rest, or anything else. So I just want us to think about that as we move forward with this budget. And lastly, and this is a picky uni thing for me because I was here when it happened. I know that we've taken out of the budget the Assistant City Manager, but it is still on staff approval list for possible hiring. And the only reason I'm making a point out of it is that. And the only reason I'm making a point out of it is that prior to this even being put into the budget, it just kind of showed up one year on the budget. There wasn't any request of management to council to put this on the budget or in the budget and to give us a reason why we needed to do it. And I guess I'm being a little bit over precautious. Certainly, we're, you know, we're recruiting for a city manager. You never know what you're going to get until you get it, and hopefully you get someone really, really good. But I don't want happening to us what happened before is with this still sitting on the books that nothing comes to the council other than approval in the budget to hire somebody. I, I really want to know why we need that person. Give us reasons why we need to have an assistant city manager. You know, all of our other departments seems to be well justified, but I never heard a justification for an assistant city manager. So that's the only reason why I would prefer to see this off our books totally. I, I know the budget, it's not in the budget, but if we need one, I'd prefer the city manager come back to the council and justify that position and tell us why we need to, to add that back in for possible hiring. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that will happen, you know, while we're here. Definitely.
Yeah, well, hopefully.
Any other comments?
But we don't know what the future holds, so.
Any other comments from the city council?
But, but, question, just following up on that. We would have to approve, no, or?
We'd have to amend the budget.
But as it is, it's not, so we're not, we're not funding that, and there's no way to do it unless it comes back from us to approve it, I'm assuming, at that time, they would have to justify, justify picking on it.
Yeah, what happened is that it was put in the budget and set for approval and just waiting for hiring. And, and it was in the budget, there was never any discussion with council as to why that position was needed. And that's, that's where, you know, I feel like we need to have a little bit more breaks in there. And the only reason why I asked for it to be removed so that if it is needed, then the city manager has to come back to council to justify why that position is needed, rather than just saying, oh, we want it funded, and this is what it's going to cost us to fund it.
Lots of times I've seen in other cities that assistant city managers are actually like project managers, and I guess you call them assistant city managers, but actually they're, they're looking over projects that the council has directed the city manager to do.
Yeah. I, I've seen it like, you know, I looked at the city of Fresno, yeah, Fresno, and of course, that's a, a large city. And they have several assistant city managers, but those assistant, assistant managers are over departments to manage what goes on in those departments and reports back, I would assume, to the city manager. So, but we're not at that point yet in our, in our city. I, I suspect maybe when we get to 75, 80, we might, and, and it may, it may come sooner than that. I, I don't know. But, you know, we, according to our budget tonight, we haven't even reached 50,000 people yet. And so I'm, I'm just being precautious based on historical factors of what has happened in the past. So it's, it's purely up to the council as to what they intend to do.
Well, it's not funded, so that's the budget. We can talk about taking it out later. Do you have any comments, Evan? So our city treasurer, Lucy Lawrence, is here. You have any comments with, about the budget, anything? You've looked it over?
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity of giving input.
Hold on, do you want to give her a mic?
Yeah. Start all over again.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Amabile, for giving me the opportunity of giving input. I have reviewed the proposed budget, and it looks really good. Everything balances. So I congratulate our finance department and all of the different department heads that were involved in putting this together. It's a lot of work, and great job.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the city council? Okay, I do have a comment. So this is my 25th government budget. I started counting last night. Not all last mayor, but I've been involved in government that's long, and this is by far the best budget I've ever approved. And so I wrote a few things last night I wanted just to read, so I don't forget anything. This budget reflects both a fiscal responsibility and the commitment to investing in the future of Los Banas. We have ensured our budget is balanced, like Lucy said, raised our reserves, and made smart, targeted investments in our top priorities, especially public safety, infrastructure, and the quality of life of our residents. These things are very important to everybody who works for the city and the city council. This budget demonstrates strong support for our police and fire departments by funding new personnel, upgraded equipment, and ongoing training. The city council's goal is to ensure faster response times and safer neighborhoods for everyone in Los Banas. We, with reserves targeted at 30% and a 10% surplus in our general fund, we are well ahead of many cities our size. We have also prioritized transparency. As I said before, this is our third go-around about our budget, with regular audits, clear public reporting, to make sure we are accountable, as your city council, to the community we serve. As we move forward with, with major capital projects, street improvements, enhancement to our public safety, we are building a stronger, safer, and a better Los Banas. We're not just, we're not just meeting today's needs, we are definitely planning for tomorrow. And I'd like, I know the whole city council would like to thank our staff, department heads, especially our finance director, Moreno, and our finance consultant, Hume, interim city manager, Gary Breezy, and most importantly, the residents of Los Banas for your ongoing input and support for the city and this council. I look forward to making this budget a real working budget for the future of our Los Banas, and I, and to the actions continuing to move Los Banas forward this coming year. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 6948, as read by title.
And we have a motion for Resolution Number 6948 for our fiscal year budget 2526. That includes updates to Division Four salary schedule, Division Thirteen business, travel expenses for the Los Banas policy and procedure manual. Any further comments from the city council? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. And thank the residents of Los Banas. Okay, our next item is road maintenance and rehabilitation account proposed projects list for fiscal year 2526. And with this, we'll go to our Parks and Recreation Director, Joe.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Okay, so I have, oh, spoilers. So I have a, a pretty extensive PowerPoint tonight in terms of information that I'm going to be giving to you. Want to give a huge, huge thank you to Martha Brazil. She's the one that really put together these numbers and was a great teacher to me because I, I definitely am still learning myself on this topic. The title of this is SB One and Streets Rehabilitation Review, and that's primarily because there is an action, a recommended action here to adopt the resolution approving the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, RMRA, and that's for proposed projects, and that's an annual thing for SB One. The reason why I'm explaining that is because the other half of, of street rehabs in Los Banas is really Measure V, and I'll get into that, but I, I just wanted to highlight that. Getting into the overview, I mentioned RMRA, that's an annual thing that gets brought to council every year for approval. Martha and her team will submit that on July 1st to the state. SB One funding for this year that we've requested and now has been approved is 1.3 million. Measure V funding is 2.7 million. I wanted to also kind of touch on what Measure V Alt funding is, which we have requested 300,000 this year. Measure V Alt is for alternative transportation. In our case, that is usually spent on sidewalks or, say, ADA curbs, I'm sorry, ADA corners. And Measure V Alt is not a, not really an option for us. It's 20%, of Measure V is allocated towards Measure V Alt, alternative transportation again. And again, it's a, a main source for us for sidewalks. Just some fun facts there, 136 miles of streets, we do have five miles of alleys, which really stood out to me, 272 miles of curb and gutter. Of course, you're going to have twice, you know, twice as much curb and gutter as you do street, and then the 262 miles of sidewalk, which is pretty impressive when I think about the streets team and what they do. So I wanted to kind of take a step back and look at our streets accomplishments in 2425. We did quite a few courts, you'll notice, on the internal overlays, and you'll see that when I get to 2026 as well. Primarily, our staff internally is going to be doing courts, those are the cul-de-sac spaces. Our staff has limitations on the, the total amount per project that they can, they, they are allowed to work on within agreements within the state of California. So we've, we've really pushed using cul-de-sacs as where you see a lot of their work at. You also see some smaller street sections. And then if you recall from last year, we did quite a few contracted overlays. This phase here, you can see all these different streets here from Fallbrook all the way to Mahogany and Health Street. That totaled 1.4 million, just over 1.4 million worth of expenditures last year, and you'll see that we, and I guess from the page one, you'll see that we increased the expenditures that we're requesting this year. A really blurry map from the street pavement system that, that, that Public Works provides. Just wanted to highlight that these streets are in different areas, and again, I'll, I'll get into how these streets are selected. So our street pavement plan, this is just the first slide for 2526, which is the budget year that'll begin on July 1st. We have a Phase One, that's that first section there on the top. Estimated expenditures is just over 1.6 million. We have, it looks like six streets there that we are going to be overlaying. You can see the PCI. PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index, and the next slide, I'm going to get into a little bit more information on that. But really, where the PCI comes from is from a street saver in April 2023. All the streets in Los Banas were assessed for their condition, for their PCI, Pavement Condition Index, and that is updated annually using a factor system. You'll also see that we have some internal overlays planned. Again, that internal overlays is completed by internal staff, our streets division staff. You, you see about six courts there that are going to be overlaid. And then I did want to note that, you know, there's other improvements that, that go on, and I kind of highlight here that 63 streets are planned for crack seals in 2026. That's going to be completed by internal staff as well. Going into another page on the fiscal year 2526 budget, and this is kind of, for me, an eye-opener as I go through this, we have, to, to begin, we have this Phase Two here that's, has not yet begun design. So going back to the previous slide, Phase One is in design right now, and we anticipate a fall construction for those. So if I go back and show you again, those are those, those first six streets listed. This Phase Two here, a little bit longer of a list and about $2.2 million investment, that has not yet begun its design phase. That will begin very shortly. I'm in process to try and get a task order going for that, and we'll hopefully construct that in spring of 2026, still within fiscal year 26. But I also wanted to talk about the PCI and our conditions of our streets because, you know, I really think it's, this is a vital topic to us as, as a community. I think it's something that council members like, I know Council Mayor Protem Lewis had asked about this street pavement plan. I know that it's very important to everybody here with the city. It's also a very large challenge. So just looking at it, we are investing just under 4 million, 3.9. We have requested $4 million, projecting 3.9 in expenditures. And we have an average citywide PCI of 48, okay? You can see to the right there with that bar graph, it breaks it down by arterials, collectors, local, and minor arterials. So just as examples, an arterial is going to be something like Artigalita, Artigalita Road. I think we have these big TVs, but in case you can't read it, that's the, the number 34. Collector, example of a collector would be like West I Street or Page Ave, that's that 47 number. Local PCI is going to be your residential, like Nevada, for, for example. Minor arterial would be like Nanties, that's the 50, okay? So looking at how the, the Pavement Condition Index works, you can see that break down 170 is very good, PCI of 69 to 50 is good, all the way down to 24 to zero. So first thing I want to highlight is, again, that our, our average citywide PCI is 48. Pure comparison within the Street Saver program, basically a similar-sized city, is 76. So I guess that's kind of the first red flag for me, right? The second red flag for me is, is that Martha was able to run projected expenditures if we were to say to ourselves, hey, let's address every street in town, PCI 24 to zero, very poor. Well, that projected cost is $23.4 million, okay? So we're spending $4 million this year, and that's an increase from last year, right? And so what I want to say is, this is, this is a big problem, right? This is something that I, I want to highlight to, to council that it needs to be in our minds to be thinking about. Getting into the budget review itself, and I know this is a lot of numbers, but I'm going to make it very simple. The first box here is the SB One, and you can look at the proposed revenues and their proposed expenditures, those are the first two lines there, the 1.34 and the 1.3 million. Not too much of a difference there. There's also a $2 million reserve. When you get to the Measure V Alt money, you know, you're spending similarly. You have proposed revenues of 236,000, which again is 20% of Measure V. And then for Measure V Alt expenditures, which again is this, this bottom box here, you're looking at 300,000. So you're, you're eating into the reserve a little bit. Where I have concern is, is when you get into Measure V, you, you're bringing in revenues of 1.2 million, but you're expending this year 2.7. You do have a nice reserve of 2.6. Next year, we're projecting another big, what I would call big investment into streets, eating into that reserve as well. Now, these reserves are meant to be expended, where we need to be presenting these plans. This is Measure V, this goes through MCAG. We need to be diligent in how we're presenting these plans moving forward. But I guess what I'm trying to do is present to, to council, to the public, that, you know, we, we need to be thinking about how we're going to be funding these moving forward. I think one thing that has brought to my attention by, by staff has been trying to pursue grants, which I just don't think the Public Works Department has been in a position to go after, but there are grants through CalRecycle, through, through CalTrans to be going through for these, these, some of these projects, depending on their qualifications. And generally speaking, again, going back to the discussion of Public Works, I think, you know, bringing that stability to that department is going to benefit that. I know that the interim city manager and the finance team were also working on a, a level of general funding impact, which would probably be most likely going into fiscal year 27. As you can see, we are funded for the fiscal year 26 this year, but I, I think that is a nice step forward, and, and I don't mean to represent that this is not a needed investment. This is absolutely a needed investment. And again, we, we want to use these reserves, we want to use this, this funding, but I want to illustrate that, you know, we need to put some thought towards how, how we're going to make this sustainable and get these roads to where we want them to be. Again, you know, if you go back to that, that scary slide where, where I'm talking about the 23.4 million for that PCI 24 to zero, well, you got to think, if we're investing $4 million a year going towards that, then, you know, by the time we're, we're getting to that point, what's, what's the poor? What's the, the 49 to 25 category doing? It's, it's worsening. So it's, it's, it's scary in that regard, and that's where I want to get ahead of this problem as, as best as we can, and, and, you know, I didn't want to be afraid to advocate and, and illustrate that to council, because I know this is a really important topic. Getting into the fiscal year 27 plan, we are projecting, trying to address this problem with a $4.4 million investment. What we're hoping for is that $2.7 million general fund allocation that finance is, is working on trying to prepare for the Streets Division, and that, and using, again, we, we anticipate 1.2 million approximately in Measure V and 1.3 approximate, or, yeah, 1.1 in approximate fiscal year 27, SB One. So there is income coming, and there's revenue coming in. And between those two, trying to, to really take steps forward with our streets pavement plan, again, we do have reserves to go beyond that if we really need to. I want to start the design of, of 2026. I want to start the design of twenty-twenty-seven this fiscal year, and so that it's prepared to be ready for overlays in summer of twenty-six, which would be the beginning of fiscal year twenty-seven. And so, yeah, I know this was a lot of information, a lot of numbers, and for me, kind of scary. But I also just emphasize that today, we have reserves, right? So we have this ability to start strategically thinking about these things. I wanted to bring it to our attention, to bring it to this, so that we can start thinking about the problem and consider that. Things like the Measure V alt review, for example, or Measure V alt funds, for example, that can be used for other alternative transportation, you know? So the more that we can address the, what did I say, a hundred and some, two-hundred-and-sixty-two miles of sidewalk, you know, the more that we could use that funding for something else, right? So we want to try to be as strategic as we can, and I hope I didn't scare you guys too bad.
I'm really glad that you're putting in, that you're going to take care of maintenance on the roads with the tar and everything. That's been missing for quite a few years in the city. And so we're spending about three, almost three times as much as this year, this coming year. I know all the city council has been told many times by the residents about the condition of our roads. And I'm really glad to see I Street in there, because that road is a mess. It needs to be taken. And I'm, of course, a member of MCAG, and the reserves, like what Joe's talking about, that's very common. Cities don't use their money, and then they pool it, and it's their money, they don't lose it. And then they go forward and, or they over-expend, knowing that they're going to get some next year. It's just a big balancing thing. Because sometimes, you know, if you wait a year, it's going to cost ten percent more next year, and so you're better off spending a little bit extra right now and trying to save that ten percent of whatever that might take you forward. So without any questions or comments from the city council?
So the crack seal, is that the chip seal, or is that just when they put the tar on the cracks?
Tar in the cracks, from my understanding.
We have the discussion, I think, about chip sealing before, and we used to do that a lot, but we don't anymore. I think it's supposed to extend the life of the roads. I guess I'm just trying to figure out if adding maintenance, well, first of all, can we catch up with the funding sources that we have eventually, like six, seven, ten years down the road? Because I see that, like, the crack seal's useful life is five to seven years, and the hot mix overlay is ten to twenty years. So with that, and then the repaving that we're doing, like, do we have a chance to catch up with the funding sources we have? Or at some point, are we going to have to figure out, we're just going to keep falling?
I don't think it's sustainable at this time. I think what we are investing this year is really needed and really important, but we cannot continue that rate without other funding sources coming in, which, again, I know I want to, and this isn't doomsday, I want to repeat that it's better to address this while we do have reserves and we have some flexibility, but it's absolutely, I don't, it's not sustainable how it is. You know, and crack seals and things like that will extend lifespans, but you're talking PCI is zero to twenty-four, and you can only go so far. So there are challenges in that way.
Are we in this situation now because we just failed to do this in the past, or just because we've always been, we've had a lack of funds?
To be honest, I don't have the full history on that. I would suggest it's, we've expanded the city quite a bit, and, you know, these funds, they're coming from things like your gas taxes and whatnot, and it's just not keeping up. I, you know, I can't speak to, you know, what might have happened during the recession and things along those lines, but, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. On the crack seal, are you going to do those in phases like you did with the rehab, because you have time designated for fall of this year and the spring of next year for the resurfacing? But the crack seal, you know, there are a lot of streets that need to be done, and in conjunction with this, how is that going to be spread out?
Yeah, so I didn't discuss with staff as far as an exact plan, but typically speaking, when they're doing crack sealing, they're scheduling that with decent weather and trying to schedule around staff bandwidth as well. You know, these sixty-three streets, they're going to, they're going to need to do those in phases. But again, they're going to want to take advantage of the rest of this, the summer portion here, as well as the early fall, and then into spring as well. I also wanted to add another project that relates just to overlay streets is downtown alleys. Those are in the budget as well for repavement. That's in process of design currently. I would expect that that to be out for a bid this winter and have a spring construction on those, because I don't think the design is quite ready for it this fall, but I did want to add that.
And I just kind of wanted to make a recommendation that we're using Measure V money for doing some of these projects. And I know in some of the other cities within the county, when they were using Measure V money, they would have signs out to let the public know that their tax dollars are at work to get these projects done. So I don't know where those signs came from, if the city has to provide them, or if MCAG provides them?
MCAG does.
Okay.
And like for the bridge, the new bridge in Dos Palos that was just dedicated about a month ago, they actually stamped the cement Measure V funding.
And I think it's a requirement of the measures.
Yeah.
So they have to write. I just know we didn't put them out all the time.
The same with SB One?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, just from being outside, I can't recall on the overlays if they were there, so it's something definitely worth looking into. I do know there is a Measure V sign-up for the Artigalita and Pioneer over there. But when I went to the last MCAG meeting, they also highlighted the stamp, and each city was provided that. And so I had already talked to staff about possibly doing that, particularly for sidewalk projects and things like that, so you may see.
And when we did the dedication, that bridge, the executive director went out and looked for the stamp.
Yeah, she was very excited about it.
And she found it, so.
Back in the day when the WPA used to lay the sidewalks in San Jose, when I was working up there, you could find all the stamps for the sidewalks that the WPA laid, so, good idea. Thank you.
I did also just want to follow up with, I did need action on the resolution to approve the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, RMR-A.
Okay, but that was, entertain a motion?
I don't know if we highlighted this, but in the budget that you just passed, we heard you loud and clear about streets being a priority for the community, and we did assign two-point-five million dollars in addition to the four million dollars that are going to this year's budget for streets for next year and for future needs. So, and I will say that we do have the Measure V stamp over in, I've seen it, the stamp, yeah, on the concrete, on the curbs. I want to say it's in the area of Ortigaliga and Cardoza. So I've definitely seen those out there. Anyways, so heavy investment in the ray of streets and roads. Good presentation, Joe.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We know how important it is for, hopefully, Caltrans can jump on one-fifty-two earlier than later. They budgeted, and it's happening, but hopefully it gets pushed up a little bit. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
As mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number Six-Nine-Four-Nine adopting a list of projects for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, funding by SB One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for Resolution Six-Nine-Four-Nine as stated. Any further questions or comments? Adhere and any signify by saying aye for a yes vote.
Aye.
And any nays. I guess after twenty-five years, you don't get it right. Thank you very much. That passed. Thanks, Joe. Okay, with that, Item Nine, Consideration and Nomination of Merced County Association Government, MCAG, Measure V Citizen Oversight Committee. And my nomination for this position is Blanche George. I'm not sure if everybody knows her, but I think we do. Again, Measure V, Citizen Oversight Committee, they meet two or three times a year in Merced, and they look at the Measure V funding that Joe just talked about, all the different requests from the six cities and the county. And they approve or disapprove, it's a little story, by the very first meeting I went to. I don't know if they were just stamping things, but I asked for the cities and the county, except for one city, to come back and give us another presentation, because they just did not present correctly, I thought. And they did. We came back for it. My asking for that caused another meeting in thirty days, and then we passed it. But anyway, my recommendation is for Blanche to be on that committee. I appointed her around twenty years ago, when she was like ten, to the Planning Commission meeting, commission, excuse me. And so I'm asking for that again. Do you have that motion or discussion? So I so move that. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Blanche George for Measure V Citizen Oversight Committee. All in favor?
It's actually not an appointment. You're going to be sending the request to MCAG to make the appointment.
So.
You're just nominating.
We're nominating, then they approve, okay?
Yes.
So we don't have to vote on it?
Yes, you do, but you're not appointing her.
Okay, nomination.
MCAG will do that.
So I'll change my motion to nominate Blanche George. And you, Marcus, you'll sign on. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you to Blanche. Item Ten, Report on Legal and Illegal Fireworks Requirements and Enforcement Action Under the Fireworks Ordinance. And this is informational only. We asked our chief, Tuala, to come forward since it's getting really, really close to July fourth. So chief, you want to grab a mic?
Chief Rayden will hop in whenever you need to hop in on this. So chief and I, and Chief Breezy, we've kind of put together a little bit of a presentation for council tonight and the public regards to our fireworks ordinance, says what's legal and what's not legal. So here we go. So just a informational presentation, provide overview of the laws that pertain to fireworks. Fireworks is something I'm very familiar with, because my last agency, I worked the last four Fourth of Julys and had to deal with fireworks in Sacramento County. So I'm very, very well-versed in this subject, unfortunately. So typically, the city has safe and sane fireworks that we have for sale. They have to be branded with the Safe and Sane Fireworks logo from the State Fire Marshal's Office. With this, this does not have that logo, and these are aerial fireworks, and I'll talk a little bit more about these. Usually, we're not seizing safe and sane. It's usually we're seizing everything that's illegal, so, everything that goes up in the air that causes an issue, so. For safe and sane fireworks, they typically don't explode, they don't leave the ground, they may, they may project a little bit of sparklers and things of that sort, but they're not anything that goes aerial. And we have a safe and sane fireworks period. So our booths open up on June twenty-eighth at noon, and then they close at eight P.M. on July fourth. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. I think I'm jumping ahead because I added that slide for you, chief. So, yeah, we have to have everyone that sells safe and sane fireworks within the city. So we typically have a total of nine booths that go through an auction, then with the tenth booth, if the downtown association is up doing the fireworks show every year. So we do have the, those folks that we prepare, they go through a permit process, well, they go through an auction process, they kind of raffle off who's going to get the booth for the non-for-profit, then the fireworks companies work with them on getting the permitting. They're very, and then we'll have a safety meeting. In fact, we'll have our safety meeting on the twenty-sixth next week in regards to making sure all the requirements are met for the fireworks booths. So part of our safe and sane regulations, again, like I said, they go on sale starting noon on the twenty-eighth, ending on July fourth at eight P.M. It's unlawful to sell these fireworks to anyone under eighteen years of age, so these all need to be adults that are purchasing them. And then anyone who buys the safe and sane fireworks can launch these, I shouldn't say launch these, they should, they can, they can display these July first through July fourth, between the hours nine A.M. to ten P.M., so. And anyone that's under eighteen years of age needs to have adult supervision, which is pretty standard, and the safety instructions will highlight those things at the booth, so they're required to provide them with those instructions, so. Yeah, and discharge of the fireworks must be conducted on private property, so they can't go and find a parking lot somewhere and launch off fireworks. It can't be in the middle of the street, it has to be within, with their property. A lot of folks will have them in their driveway, right along the sidewalk there, pretty close to their residence. And then the only time that we can have them have fireworks in the streets is when, in conjunction with a permit, that they would have like a neighborhood event, and then we have a party, a neighborhood party. Although Safe and Sane says they're safe and sane, they can still be dangerous. So every year, the Consumer Products Safety Commission, in twenty-twenty-three was our last report they had available, was ninety-seven-hundred fireworks injuries. A majority of these were actually safe and sane fireworks. There's a good majority that are not safe and sane. My biggest issue is making sure that folks follow the safety rules. Two years ago, or I guess it's been three years ago, I had two fatal fires that I had to investigate in Sacramento County. Both involved safe and sane fireworks, so the safety tips really need to be followed and to help prevent the injuries and deaths. So unfortunately, due to improper disposal of the safe and sane fireworks caused the, was related to the deaths of these two individuals, and one of them was a child. So with our safe and sane fireworks, we also have safety messages that we're going to be putting over social media. We've already started that campaign. And at every fireworks booth, there is pamphlets, or they have the QR code that will have the safety instructions for everyone. And the vendors who have the booths are required to provide that, so. Okay, illegal fireworks, unfortunately, when you have safe and sane fireworks, that also brings in some of the illegal fireworks that come in, and some of these are commercial fireworks. And what I have here for a sample, or, these would be what they call a small cake firework that you typically would get, like somewhere, like in Nevada, somewhere out of the state of California. And these are, you know, bought over the shelf. These, on the other hand, are supposed to be used with launch tubes. This is actually a commercial firework, so this is considered a one-point-three explosive. So if somebody's caught with this, we would be handling it under the explosive sections, which is a felony section in California, like this one here. This one says, warning shoots flaming balls, so this would shoot up in the air, would have a report and blow up. Sometimes, these will get caught somewhere, and they'll actually blow up on the ground. I have, went through quite a bit of body cam footage from my last agency where we were actually launched at with these type of fireworks, so it's not uncommon. One thing to note, that this is like a brown packaging, that's another thing, that's kind of an indicator this is more of a commercial firework, doesn't have very much in regards to markings. Versus this one here that you would buy, like in Nevada, it's shiny, it's got packaging, it's got warnings all over it. This would be more of a, one that you'd be able to go into a fireworks store in another state to buy, just as dangerous as that one. This one just happens to have more explosive powder in this one. So if these don't bear the State Fire Marshal's seal, they're considered illegal, so. Same thing, bottle rockets. I mean, I remember bottle rockets as a kid, so, packages of these bottle rockets, they actually launch in the air and they pop, so. And then here's another one, screaming rattler. So this one actually has a little report and also shoots out flames, so. Any fireworks discharged outside the designated dates or in prohibited areas is illegal, whether it's legal or not. If you happen to launch within a public area, even though it's a safe and sane firework, it's not within the ordinance. That's actually a violation in itself. And obviously, anything illegal that we're, that is being launched is a violation also. So chief, I'll have you chime in on, feel free to chime in on this. So violations result in fines, confiscations of fireworks, potential misdemeanor charges. Under the municipal code, the violations are misdemeanor, and I'll have chief kind of chime in.
Thank you, chief. Excuse me. Mayor, council, thank you. So, the police department, we've been planning extensively for this season. As you know, we get a lot of calls for service. We will have extra staffing out during the season. We are going to have a number of patrol officers, code enforcement, supervisors, dispatchers to take calls, jailers. We even, we even have plans on who we're going to break in case. Generally, we have, you name it, we have it. Major vehicle accidents, sometimes there's residential fires. And what we don't want is we don't want those events to pool from our firework enforcement. And so we're thinking about all of that. So, we're going to have a number of staffing available that night. Those nights, we're also going to be at the Fourth of July event the week before. And so, we're, we're ready, it'll be zero tolerance. And like chief said, all the staff will be briefed, have all the codes available. We even go through a process where we go over past citations that were issued that perhaps we may have lost those in a hearing and where we erred. So, for example, there's been occasions where we may have, we cited maybe a parent because the child was firing fireworks. Well, if you read the code, should have cited the actual person who was in violation. And so we're going to go over all of those things. The, the fine for possession or discharge of these illegal fireworks is about $1,250. And so, I want to say last year, we wrote about $25,000 worth of citations just in one night. And so, it's a, it's a big number, but it's a big number because these items are very draining on our resources. And generally, if there is a need from the public, it takes a little bit longer for us to get to them. So, that's why these citations are the way they are, so. And we work with the fire department on a number of things. A lot of times, we go to the same calls. So, we work together and try to make it safe.
Thanks, chief. Just going to go over a little bit on the ordinance itself. So, the municipal code violation that chief was talking about is a $1,250 fine. And the property owners, tenants, or a person that's controlled the property can be held responsible for the lighting of illegal fireworks on the premise. So, if it's even, somebody there having a party, somebody comes over, they light fireworks, they can be responsible for they, for the, the illegal setting of the fireworks. So, the ordinance applies to both the residential and commercial properties. So, we have, well, like chief said, he'll have extra dispatchers on because we receive a lot of public complaints. We'll get some folks that will actually witness the event, that will get the information for us, and we can work through the citation proc, process. I think I already covered this one. So, and the city also may recover the cost of enforcement investigation, emergency response in addition to these fees. So if this creates a fire or some other public hazard where we've had to expend additional time and, and hours on, on an incident, we can recover those. Chief talked about the enforcement, so it'll be increased patrols. We're typically out, so last year, we were, I mean, PD was obviously very busy. We were very busy also. We had actually upstaffed an additional engine for that day due to the fact that usually we'll have all three, we'll have three engines available. All three engines will be tied up on calls for probably a three to four hour period. And last year didn't help because county actually had a fire up in Mariposa. So they started draining resources, and we had to start responding to county calls also. Again, public outreach, we're doing educational campaigns. So we're trying to push a lot of stuff over social media right now and using that as a platform for us right now.
All right, any questions to the?
If somebody has Safe and Sane fireworks, but they throw them, is that still considered illegal?
If somebody gets injured in the, in the process, I, unfortunately, I've had, I had a situation while I was in Sacramento. We had that happen and ended up injuring a child. So, we ended up charging them with a health and safety offense and a criminal offense. So, I can, I don't want to step on you to those chiefs, so.
Are you going to be, chief, are you going to be using drones or anything like that? Or just pretty much patrol?
Yeah.
I know, I know I recommend a bucket of water if you're going to do fireworks, Safe and Sane fireworks. That's the safest thing to do, dump the used ones in a bucket of water.
Absolutely. And what we usually tell folks is when you're, it's actually part of one of the, the instructions with Safe and Sane fireworks. But I always tell folks, have that bucket of water, leave them in there overnight. One of my cases before I came to Los Banos was a gentleman that lost his life in a fire. And what happened was he had thought he had drained, he had drained off all the fireworks and threw them in his garbage can, put the garbage can in his garage, ended up having to start in a garage fire, so. It was unfortunate. So I always suggest that if you are going to use it, keep the, keep them in that bucket for at least a day or two. Let them completely soak before throwing them away in the garbage.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, so I was looking at this a little bit, and I saw that we have administrative fines instead of the criminal ones, which?
Yes.
From what I was reading, you can issue those citations based on video, like an officer doesn't actually have to see it. Are we issuing citations based on video or social media or drone? I guess we're not going to put the drones that we have up to try to watch.
No, we get a lot of damage with drones. We did in Sacramento one year, and we lost several drones, and that was it, no more. I'm sorry, chief, I'll let you.
We have to be very careful with the drones. We've, we've talked about it, we try to come up with a strategy. Our drones are managed under FAA guidelines. So, if we're intentionally, if we're putting something up where we know something is flying towards them, and they go down and hit something, it's, it's pretty extensive what we'll have to go through. And if we injure somebody, our pilots can lose their license. So, we have to be very, very careful.
So there's, there's not a ceiling where the fireworks only go so high, and you can't have the drones above that or anything?
Yeah, our, our drones can only go so high, and I think the fireworks probably go a little higher.
Do the fines go up for repeat offenses?
Max $1,250.
That's the max? And then, the first question about administrative, is it only if officer sees, or somebody that's, that's uniformed sees them, sees somebody setting off fireworks, that you can issue a citation, or can it be done?
No, I believe it's, we have to witness the violation. So, for example, there are some codes that we can take action, some misdemeanors. Generally, a misdemeanor has to be committed in your presence. But there are some things, for example, DUI enforcement. There are other, there's a few offenses that we can arrest without scene, but fireworks is not one of them. We actually have to witness.
The advantage of having us be administrative is just that you don't have to go through courts?
Correct. So, so we, so it's handled internally. It's a violation of the city ordinance, and it's handled administratively, administratively through the city of Los Banos.
Is there, the only way for people to contact to report this is just through the normal non-emergency hotline or 3911?
So, we've talked about this. The police department, the city of Los Banos does have an anonymous area through our city website. There's also social media. The problem with those is our staff is not staring at the screen constantly. And there's really no way to immediately have a conversation and ask follow-up questions. So the best way is to call our dispatch center and provide that information. And part of our operational briefing with our staff is going over those things. So, making sure that we put the priority, when the call comes in and says, it's Evan Sanders' house, this is his address, I see him shooting them off, versus, there's fireworks going off somewhere in my neighborhood. Well, we want to go to the location where we know we have an address and we have potentially someone telling us what's going on. And so that's part of that process. And then, if we incorporate online tips, now, online tips can be helpful, but again, just require staff to monitor that and be able to go back and forth to ask follow-up questions.
So, I think that having something online and being able, and putting that on social media would be valuable because this isn't just happening on Fourth of July, it's like a week leading up to it. My neighborhood's a war zone for a week leading up to it. And there's, it's like probably two or three houses that are responsible for almost all of it.
Yeah, and.
So, and I'm sure, I, I hear it all over town, so I know that it's an issue kind of in certain places.
Yeah, and let me be clear, we are receiving the online tips. I, I just thought you meant the night of, which is the highest concentration.
What I was talking about then, but just having that available and publicizing it so people can start reporting early on and get used to what the system looks like.
Sure.
I think there's value to that. Okay.
Yes, mayor, thank you. You made, mentioned that you'd given out a citation to a household or a person, but it was a child that actually set it off, and so the court dismissed the case. So, if you, if you get a report from someone in the community about there's fireworks at a certain address, and a lot of times, you know, when residents see police cars coming, they, they kind of stop the activity. And then, when it goes by, they start it up again. How, how do we handle that here in Los Banos? Do you actually have, because no one's going to admit that they were the one that set off the fireworks.
So you're asking me to give up our tactics?
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm just playing, I'm just playing with you. So, again, it's, it's not a perfect system. Council member, unfortunately, not every house is, is going to be firing these things off. So if we know that it's going on at a location, and we see them coming from the front yard, or we even see them coming from the resident, the backyard, there are ways that we can approach it. Doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that we are going to give a citation that night, but it means that we can follow up if we have information. We perhaps can give a citation the next day. But there are a number of ways of doing it. And then sometimes, just the act of us being in the neighborhood is going to prevent that from happening, making contact, and potentially could prevent a fire, someone losing their house or property. And so, it's, it's about enforcement, zero tolerance, but it's also about preventing some of these things from happening. And so, imperfect system, but, but we still do suggest that people contact us and let us know if they see these things going on because it helps us to identify where they're coming from.
And if the residents that are in the household are not the owners of the home, you have the option of either citing them, and if they refuse to pay, can you go back to the owner for restitution?
I'd have to check on that. There are a number of sections, there's the community caretaker section of the municipal code. So, there's other ways that we can cite the property owner. But yet again, we're, we're really trying to correct the behavior that night and prevent these things from happening. So, we try to go after the ones that are committing the violation. And in doing so, stop violation, potentially the fires, the 3:00 AM explosions that wake us all up and those things.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both very much for the information. It's an informational item only. The action will be taken by the city council. Now we'll go to our city department reports, and we'll start with park and recreation director, Joe Heim. Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening, thank you again. Yeah, so if you go to Shaughnessy Park right now, you'll start to see the concrete forms in place. You see where the sidewalk and where the playground space is. It's exciting to see that progress. You'll also see at Ag Sports Complex, the South Field, SOD is in now, the North Field was in a few weeks back, but now both fields are in. So that project is also progressing along. Similarly with, with pickleball, and we also have some shade structures, projects going. So, quite a bit of movement on, on that end of things. It also, just on the parks end, like to highlight that we do expect to bring Colorado Ballpark as an item for the next council meeting, which won't be until July 16th. But I did want to follow up on that because a lot of people have been asking. I wanted to highlight that the Fourth of July event is coming up on June 28th. And so Parks and Rec will be there along with some other city staff, including our public safety and public works teams. And otherwise, yeah, just, public works is, is never-ending, never-stopping. It's every, every day, there's a new acumen, and every day, there's a new project. They're quite, helping quite a bit with the PD department over at the encampment. We have the Sixth Street, Six and I Street sidewalk project. There's a number of projects that are, are getting prepared to be put out to bid in anticipation of fiscal year '26, as far as out, out to bid for construction, finishing up some lift stations at North Gate and Santa Barbara and a few other locations. And, and just really, like I said, every, every day, it seems like there's, there's something new. So, want to really thank public work staff, as well as Parks and Rec. But, but I really appreciate being a novice in some of these areas, the way that they've educated me, as well as just being responsive and very grateful for that, so.
So the event on the 28th, it starts at the plaza with vendors, correct?
So, my understanding, and this is, this event is run through the downtown association, but my understanding is they are planning to have the Friday Night Farmer's Market at the Henry Miller Plaza, and that'll include the amusement park rides being open that night. So that's the night before the Fourth of July event. And then, on the 28th itself, there'll be a, a larger event, including all the vendors. I think they're trying to do a car show this year, amusement rides. And then, of course, the fireworks show that evening when it gets dark.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Tualla, you have anything else to say to us?
Well, thank you again. I appreciate it, I appreciate the council's support too with our additional positions. And I really would like to see that third position funded. It's definitely been quite a bit of a, a lot of work for, for the chiefs, for the chief and I to handle some additional calls. I just want to point out today, a perfect example of, we talked about our staffing. We had a fire today where we actually ended up losing a home just because we didn't have adequate personnel due to the heat and the response times to, to our call. So, we ended up pulling three additional engines from, from county, which stripped them. They had to pull units out of Madera County to cover the west, and then they ended up having their own fire. So we had to release at least one piece of equipment. So, we're constantly battling that, that staffing issue. And we're now at over 600 overlapping calls for the year, whereas, you know, those are calls where both units are out on call at the same time. And while we were out in the spire, we had three additional calls come in, and we had to turn one call down and send it back to rigs. And then, the other two calls, we're able to get somebody to break free for it, so. But I appreciate support in, in getting those battalion chief positions, and thank you again.
Thank you, chief, we're headed in the right direction. Finance director, Moreno, any?
Yes, just wanted to let the public know that city hall will be closed early for staff training on Thursday, June 19th. Will be closed from 4:00 to 5:00. And so, just wanted to let our, our residents know, and you. And then, I also wanted to remind you of Shop Smart and Support Local campaign that's going to be coming out to keep more tax dollars in Los Banos of our sales tax dollars. And with that, being able to fund some of the things that we talked about tonight and some of the things that are needed moving forward. And as much as we can take those dollars back for our community, the services will, will come, additional services. So, that's all I have.
That's going to be great. Knowledge for the peoples, how it affects all of us. Police chief, Reyna, Ray?
Well, again, mayor, council. So several weeks ago, the city of Los Banos held a meeting here in the chambers, and it was for vendors. And many of the vendors and residents complained about some of the illegal vending that goes on in the county near the city. So tonight, the city of Los Banos, county Merced, code enforcement from both divisions, sheriff's department, they're out tonight addressing some of those violations. And so, we heard the community, and so we're working with them. County Merced has committed to focusing a little bit more on Los Banos, some of these areas. Also, thank you for adopting tonight's budget for the extra staffing. It is, it is very helpful when we have personnel to get things done. We are 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we never close. So, we appreciate that, we appreciate the budget. Thank you, many in your department. And Brent Coon also, thank you, has been a valuable friend and partner to the city of Los Banos and police department. So thank you.
Chief, we're headed in the right direction, like I said earlier. Chief, we're headed in the right direction, like I said earlier. Our city interim city manager, Gary Breezy, Ray?
So, Mayor, I'm with the council. Thank you very much. I could go on and on about the budget and all of the good things that we passed tonight. So, the thanks is definitely in order for the mayor and council. And I hope that we can achieve your vision efficiently and effectively as quickly as we can because it's, it's really important that we, what's the word, Minnie? We execute. So, that's our goal in 20, this new fiscal year is that we're going to execute the budget in an efficient manner. So, thank you to you and your team for putting this budget on. Rosemary and Sarah and Minnie, this has been going on for months, months and months that we've been working on this in the background. So, March, April, this is when it starts rolling. If you go back to mid-year as well. So, I also want to just point out that the Spain neuter, I know it's a small dog in the fight of our budget, but we increased it from $8,000 to $50,000 this year. So, thank you for that. That means a lot. We're actually going to try and have a much better tracking effort to see what we can do with the overall pet population in town, see if we can make an impact on that. So, that'll be nice to look at. Speaking of our pet population, we just got word yesterday, I believe it was, that PG&E will be out on June 30th to hopefully install the transformer as well as power the upgrade out at the animal shelter. We have been waiting for that portion of the project for weeks, if not months at this point. Understand they're busy and we've reached out to every person that we could to try and grease the wheel to get that accomplished quicker. But it is happening on June 30th. We have not been able to install some of the fencing. There was no reason, excuse me, the motors to the gates and the fencing. Some of the landscaping hasn't been finished because it requires electricity to do so. So, it's all been stalled because of this. But thankfully, we're getting to move forward on June 30th. We're not ready for groundbreaking, but we are much closer after June 30th with power to actually see at night and have some, some ability to close the gates electronically. It's a huge step forward in that process to get that updated, upgraded shelter in place. You will see, if you drive out there, there's much taller fences out there around the, the play yards, and they're a little bit more concealed for the animals to be able to play in a, in a safe environment. There's now three fenced-in areas as opposed to two that we used to have. They all have new landscaping and sprinklers. They're all going to get reseeded, so it's going to look nice out there. Very well thought of and thought out, the plan. It's got room for improvement and expansion. So, I want to say thanks to the police chief and his staff for putting that all together. And I think that is it tonight, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
As long as you and Minnie execute the budget, not the city council, we'll be happy. So, with that, we'll go to Evan's, Evan Sanders, District Two. Evan?
So, this might be your 25th budget, but it's my first one. So, I think the bar's been set really high. Thanks to Minnie and all the staff. I'm, I'm really happy with it. I, I feel like it's going to be hard to beat in subsequent years, but it's, there's a lot of good stuff in there. So, really, really cool to see that. Nobody else has commented on the homeless, homeless encampment, which I think is awesome because it looks really great. It looks like a, I mean, you know, it's still a homeless encampment, but, but compared to what it was, it's a completely different animal. The, the general consensus on the interwebs was that it was going to look awful within days, and it still looks pretty much like it when it went out two weeks ago. So, congratulations on that. Really nice job. Very impressed with Ray, Gary, everybody. I regularly see people comment on social media that the streets need to be fixed. On, Brad, it's completely unrelated to fixing the streets. Pretty much anything that the city puts up, it's, "Why don't you fix the streets?" So, I'm really happy to see the streets report. And with the list of everything that's going to be fixed, that's, that's great. Really good communication. It shows that we're listening to what people want and that we're, we're delivering on it. I want to say congratulations to Bradley Roland and Alex Valdez. They graduated from the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department Core Academy. I can confidently say it was an intense six-week course because Bradley is my stepson, so I talk to him about it just about every day. Congratulations to both of them on that achievement. I want to touch back real quick on the fireworks. I'd like to have another conversation about it after Fourth of July, just to talk about how enforcement went and see if there's anything we can do to maybe improve for next year. Fireworks, honestly, like all, they'd be, all of them would be illegal in town. If it was up to me, I, I just don't see the purpose in any of it. So, I'm Councilmember Buzzkill on that one. And as always, thanks to all staff for great work. I appreciate everything you do.
Great. Thanks, Evan. District Three, Marcus Chavez?
No particular order, but yeah, the encampment, definitely. Thank you, Chief Reyna and Chief Breezy and Chief Tualla for, you know, all of you guys' work and also Mr. Heim, the Public Works and everybody that's involved with that. You guys are keeping it up. Definitely, and we know it's not, you know, it's not the answer and that's not, you know, that's not the end-all, be-all or anything, but there's improvements being made. Water's being moved away from the water, from the rail trail to improve that area as well, which is good. You know, as far as the budget, definitely thanks to everyone involved with that. It's good to see that, you know, we're doing some good things and definitely on the roads. Totally agree on that. And thank you, Joe, for, you know, further highlighting. We've got work to do still to keep up with the roads. That's a big deal. So, I would like to see us continue trying to get that solved. But also, for the budget for future, I know I'd, I'd met with Chief Tualla and Minnie was there. We, and there's a few things we had talked about. I knew you had talked about some other cities. There's inspections that get done and there's, you know, there's fees associated where a lot of that stuff's going free right now. We're growing, and I think it's something we need to revisit, look at and see if it's something that we need to start incorporating as we, as we get bigger because, you know, we need to get that third battalion chief, as Ms. Lewis said. So, I think that's something that we should probably be working on already so we can get, get there sooner rather than later. Let's see. I'm glad to see the, the Lewis parking lots coming together. It's, I love it. So, I can see the light there. The buildings are gone. So, thank you. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that much. And I guess I'll jump on board with Councilman Buzzkill with these other two over here. Ever since people found out I'm on the council, people are, are, you know, start asking about the loud music and stuff like that. And I don't know if we have any kind of ordinances or anything, I mean, because it continues to happen. And I don't know if there's anywhere to deter people from continuing to do it. I don't know if we have anything set in place, but maybe something in the future to, to visit and talk about, you know, versus resources of you guys having to go out constantly to the same house over and over and over. It's like, well, I'm just going to wait till, you know, police show up and then I'll turn the music down. I think there needs to be some form of deterrent so we're not wasting valuable resources on that over and over. So, other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Chief, if you want to say anything about the noise ordinance we have?
Yes, Mayor. So, the City of Los Angeles does have a ordinance where if we respond a certain number of times, for example, music, we can issue them a citation. And that is one of the, one of the ordinances where we can do it the next day also. So, we have done that. Don't want to always throw it on this, but a lot of times, what it, it comes down to is, it comes down to staffing on a shift. Generally speaking, there are a number of calls that we respond to that require two officers. And so, those will always be the priority compared to maybe perhaps a loud music call or something like that. And that's just, that's unfortunate. So, we're always looking for ways to improve on that. But we do, we have issued citations and to those types of residences for, for example, for loud music. But sometimes, there's just so many of them, especially on the weekends. And it's hard to get to, it's hard to deal that way with all of them.
And maybe we need to revisit and take a look and see what, what we have in place and is it good enough? Does that have enough teeth in it? So, it frees up your resources on how to keep going back. Anyways, that's for later. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? That's it. Mayor Pro Tem, Deborah Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for naming the parking lot after me. When I did drive up today and I got out of the car and I saw spaces there, it, it was a joyful thing. So, thank you to all, all of our staff, to our city manager for making this happen. And, and as I indicated to him, I know that our residents are going to be very happy that they have a place to park now when they come to City Hall and that our staff doesn't have to park out on the street anymore. They, they can be safe as well. Just, we have our airboard meeting tomorrow and I reviewed the agenda. We get a call from our CEO every month when we have a, a meeting to brief us on what's going on with the agenda. But just for a little pre-information, I, I'll have to wait until we actually have a staff report through, through an organization called ValleyCAN is where we get, well, we get our allocations from the state of California carbs to distribute out to ValleyCAN to help people either get their car smog, get their cars repaired, or help them with money to purchase a new vehicle. And depending on where you are, if you are a low-income, considered low-income, there's more money available to you to purchase either a EV car or one that's electric and gas, a hybrid. And then, also for the general public, such as you and I who don't qualify for low-income, there is still money available to help with the down payment on a new vehicle or a slightly-used vehicle. So, there are, there is money out there. I think we are getting $9 million this year in that program. So, I would like to advise the public, anyone who needs help with a vehicle, with vehicle repairs, smogging, to go to valleyair.org and look up that program on the website so that you can access that money to help you with your issues regarding your vehicle. In regards to the additional funding that we're going to be getting for the animal shelter, just one of the things that I, has crossed my mind for quite some time is that perhaps for people who are licensing their, their animals, sometimes they forget. And it, it might be a good way of us tracking those animals that once they're licensed, they're in the system, maybe we can get help from our volunteers to do some programming for our police department to send out reminders to those public members so that they can make sure that they come and register their animals again. And, you know, you're, you're required to have a rabies shot, at least for the dogs. I'm not sure what it is for the cats. But it's a good way of tracking and keeping somewhat of a control on, on the people who are already licensed their animals. Thank you to our staff for a very good report this year on our budget. It made life easy. And some of the things that I had questions on, I was able to contact Minnie and get some answers immediately. And I'm sure she contacted Joe on some things in regards to the roads. So, it was a really good presentation. I'm, I'm glad that our staff is getting what their needs are, getting their needs met as far as staffing and other things are concerned. Streets, that's a big complaint with every city. We hear that MCAG that the big complaint is our streets. I think we heard it back in DC from the people who went to One Voice. It's the streets. People want their streets to be in good condition. So, we're moving in the right direction. It, it's been kind of a neglected thing for a while, and so, we're, we're back on track and I'm happy about that. So, thank you for moving that program forward. In, in regards to our fireworks, I, I know that the chief is probably going to be working for next year to increase the fine because it has gone up statewide. I think the, the maximum's something like $2,200, $2,300. And we're a little bit behind on that, but hopefully, next Fourth of July, we'll be able to collect more money for people who are in violation of shooting off illegal fireworks. And that is it this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to start off with, I had a MCAG meeting last week and before the meeting, we discussed homeless throughout the whole county and all the different cities. And it is, it's improving throughout, throughout the whole county of Merced. And they really spoke highly about the progress Los Angeles has made. 28% decline? We've had 28%, trying to remember my percentages, over the last year. And of course, about the One Tree Project that's coming up. So, that was good. I have a meeting, let's see, next week. Peninsula Clean Energy, I'm on the board of that. That's our power company for Los Angeles. It provides the generation energy. PG&E provides the transmission. And it's a 10% discount at this time. Looks like that will continue to next year. January 1st, they set the new rate and it looks like they're going to stay 10% below PG&E. And it's just the generation part of your bill, your PG&E bill, is 10% lower than what PG&E is going to charge. Interesting thing, power is dropping drastically throughout the whole country. The generation of power, you talked about, it looks like it's going to be a 35% decrease in the cost of generating power throughout the nation, including California. And that's why they can keep a 10% below PG&E. The other reason is PG&E is going to raise rates even though they're getting a 35% reduction in buying energy. And so, that's what's going on with that. Also, we have a meeting coming up. I'm on the, I'm on their finance board. I'm also on a marketing board that's going to come up with a new name besides Peninsula Clean Energy because now they're incorporating other cities like Los Angeles that's not in the peninsula. So, it's time for them to change a more broader-looking sounding name that includes more of Northern California. Let's see. With that, encampment, I'm getting a lot of good comments from the citizens. Again, thanks to everybody involved. A lot of work. And there's more to come. This council's going to be directing staff, staff's bringing things before us in the next few months to improve the situation even more. We'll be voting on it. And it's very important to all of us. I know it's very important to the people, our residents. And it's very important to take care of the people in that encampment, and we're doing it with compassion. That, our next meeting is canceled because of the July 4th holiday. So, our next meeting here in the chambers will be July 16th. So, with that, any other comments from the city council? Yeah?
Lady here, just real quick, AV84, is the one you referenced? Okay, that's it.
Okay. We want to look at that. We do listen and we observe when people talk to us at the podium. So, with that, I really appreciate everybody joining us this evening out in the online world and the web world and here in the council chambers. So, that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.